I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, visitor comments? Ann?
Hi. My question, I guess, is for Justine. I'm concerned about the townhouse bidding process for our $95,000 grant. The first round, we got one bid, $40,000 over, but the bidding process hadn't been done properly. The date in the Whister telegram was two days after the supposed walk through. Nobody walked through. And so it was having to be rebid. I want to know if the bids are out yet. The specifications that the contractors would work with to give us bids.
So the scope of the project was too large. So I'm actually, I have a call with CMRPC Joe Ferguson on Wednesday. And one of the things I'm going to go over with him is how to make the bid smaller so we actually get bids within our price point. Because as you know, it was $40,000 more than, so I'm waiting for that conversation because I think we need to somehow shrink the size of our project, and it was not bidding correctly. So it's going back out. We had the first round. Again, I need to have my conversation with Joe. I want to get his expertise on how to shrink the scope of the project so we actually get bids in our price point. So we only have $95,000.
Yes. And I was originally told that if it came in over, then we would have to eliminate some things. But do we eliminate them before we even put out the bid?
Yes. So again, I am going to wait for my conversation on Wednesday. That has not happened yet. And I'll go from there. I'll definitely keep you updated. I wish you would talk to me before the meeting. I will definitely keep you posted once I meet with Joe and get his expertise.
Okay. Do keep me posted because I would need to know when the walkthrough is, and I want to be present at the bid opening.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, on that note, I would like Ann to make sure that at least some members of the Historical Commission are in on this whole thing. And Justine, you should be talking to some of us on the Historical Commission because we can give you insight on what's priority and what has on some of these things. Because there are ways of working around it, but this is a historical building and we should be in on it.
I'm going to go off where Ann has down for priorities because that's who worked on the project with the prior town administrator.
But she probably has some input when you're, you know, before you talk to Joe or after you talk to Joe because she's been, it's been near and dear to her.
I know the answer.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I'm assuming that a couple of clarifications. On the old business, we're talking about the town, abandoned town buildings. I'm assuming that the Zico's conversation is going to be in on that, too?
Tonight? Yeah.
Okay, all right. And the last one on something about moving forward with a selectment or something.
Goals.
Goals, okay. Is that addressing the kicking the can down the foot, the road, certain things?
I don't know. You'll have to tell me when we're done.
Okay.
How we did. Thank you.
All right. One last thing. Okay. Well, no, ask clarifications on which we're discussing. I've got some real concerns about this whole process with trying to hire a town accountant. Because I'm sure you know, Eric, if nobody else up there knows, we have a personnel committee in this town.
Right.
And this should have gone through the Personnel Committee to vet people, to talk about the interviews and do the application process. It should not have gone through Justine.
Thank you. It went through the Select Board.
Well, I'm just saying is that we have a Personnel Committee that should have done all of that stuff, and it doesn't appear that it was done.
No, we need a Personnel Committee meeting in the near future, for sure. Thank you. Ms. Bottomley?
Yes. I'd like to give an update on the Wareover Park. The Wareover Park is actually town-owned property, but it's under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
It's at the gazebo, right?
At the gazebo. The rail trail all the way up to the Wareover Park overlook. It's 10 acres of riverfront property. And Conservation Commission has been working very hard on a number of projects this past spring and for the past five years, actually. But this spring, this is regarding public safety, we had Broder Campbell Fence Company come out and replace a broken fence panel, as well as put other new fence panels along that sluiceway. So if anyone was walking along the upper top of the sluiceway, you know, there would be less chance of them falling in. We also had some brackets repaired at the gazebo that had been broken, that were on the fence of the gazebo by Broder Campbell as well. And under the advice of our stone mason, Eric Bohein, we were looking at the structural integrity of the stones along the sluiceway. And since we have cleaned this up a lot, we moved bittersweet and grape vines, it's a lot more exposed. And there is an opening, there's a tunnel that goes underneath the road, Route 32, from the sluiceway to the, under the ground to the mill. And so we thought this would be probably best if it was closed off. And so Mark Korzek came down and volunteered his time to help put up a fence panel, which was a hog panel, a fence panel that was donated by the Harvick Farms Co-op, and which we very much appreciated. And Eric and his two helpers were there on the scene to help secure the fence panel with the drill that's going into the stone and anchoring it so this panel will be permanently in place. So we really appreciate the efforts of Mark and Eric and his workers that came, Tyler Angel. And that's at the gazebo area. And also on our rail trail, we've been trying to spruce up the rail trail. We got about 10 yards of stone dust or so, delivered a week and a half ago at the Harvick House of Pizza side. Because it was thin, it wasn't completely covered the first time. So Neil Haylen has donated his time and with his tractor, and we moved and shoveled and raked those 10 yards of stone dust from the boardwalks up to the Harvick House of Pizza. And it looks beautiful. It really looks great now. So those are the things that have been going on in the past few months at the Wareover Park.
Thank you. Thanks for the added. But I would like to throw in that my helpers are Tyler Sinclair and his stepson, Angel McDaniel. So they both live in town. And they've helped out when the flood came and all that. So thank you.
Thank you. This is a community effort. This is a park that's enjoyed not only by our town residents, but many people. When I was working there this past week, I had motorcyclists from Boston, someone was picnicking at the Wareover Park overlook, having a breakfast that they had bought at Route 32. So this is working, where people are coming and using the trails and hiking and canoeing and biking. So this is, it's a really good thing for the town.
Great community.
Becky, the other thing, just for you to be aware of, is that there will be some tree maintenance going on soon, just so people know, bringing trees down.
Yes, well, National Grid, they contracted a forester company that had identified some dead trees that were along the lines from the Wareover Park overlook from that big Norway spruce going down the railroad, down the rail trail. There were eight trees, either most of them were ash, dead from the Emerald Ash Bor and a couple other maple trees that were in decline, which are going to be moved. And that's going to be happening in the winter sometime when it's cold, they'll be coming in. But it's preventative maintenance, so these lines won't be hopefully hit by these fallen dead limbs. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
She won't like it, but can I take a minute to thank Becky Bottomley for coordinating and facilitating and overseeing the last few years, the restoration of the rail trail and a lot of that work? Thank you.
And what is your name?
I'm not, never sure which day it is. But as the Chair of the Conservation Commission, I thank both Neil and Becky for being involved, and David Larson and his family for coming to do things like weed whacking and whatever's needed. Can I just quickly remind us all? We've all been on, except for Jeff Schaaf, on Zoom conference calls with Senator Joe Commerford and Representative Aaron Saunders regarding the Quavon legislation to try to get just compensation for a lot of us Quavon border towns. And we've got a few weeks, a couple of weeks anyway, to try to hammer a letter into shape, a draft letter. And I think maybe you all have emails, but with this information. So it's not like you need to read it now or memorize it. But that's actually the letter? Justine has it. Jeff, you probably haven't seen it yet. But there are a few pieces. There are a few pieces that eight or 10 Quavon towns are trying to coordinate on, and one is a letter to the Mass Water Resources Authority explaining that the towns up here haven't had any representation on the boards and committees for Mass Water Resources Authority, and that we should be allowed to attend a meeting to be able to discuss this legislation. And, you know, basically explain the point of view of the towns being custodians of a lot of these private lands that drain into the Quavon. So at some point, maybe in two weeks at the next Select Board meeting, we should, we may be looking at kind of a final proposed version that we can all, our towns can decide whether we want to sign on to as a group. And it might look nice at the Select Board, and I'm looking at Vice Chair Tinker. We've both been to testify in Boston. Eric, you've been involved in some of the discussions and certainly on the Zoom sessions. It might be nice if the Board can see its way clear to actually sign as a board for the town.
I'm on it.
Yeah. Well, and I figured you were. I just thought I'd publicly state it for the record.
Yeah, all right, that's good. So you think, I know they're getting comments and trying to winnow it down a little. You think there'll be, there'll be a letter?
Yeah, I think the letter doesn't sound bad as it is. It basically says, hey, we're out here and we're here taking these lands. Could you maybe invite us to a meeting so that we can come and speak and discuss the fact that we think we actually do more than you realize? I think that's what it's about. And, you know, I was, I felt a little guilty. I wasn't prepared so much for today's Zoom call. But, you know, you have like seven or eight towns there staring back on the screen, talking about signing on and supporting a letter. And there are some additional steps. In the spring, they're proposing that each town, I guess, present a resolution at town meeting that the town officially supports this effort, this legislation. So just so it's on the record. Thanks for your, thanks for your participation.
Thank you.
And you've been on a lot of the Zoom calls, too. I know I've always seen you there.
Today.
This could get us some more money, we hope. Actually, we are going to see some more money, some more PILT money, for two years while they're instituting a payment in lieu of taxes, I say PILTS, pilot study. The governor authorized the pilot study, but in the two years leading to the point where they may have something, in the meantime, there's some interim additional money for towns. And I think we'll see some of that.
Okay. Mr. Paul?
Thank you. I'm not sure which of the following things will be open for public comment as we get to them in the agenda, so I wanted at this time if I may just offer a couple thoughts. Under Old Business, second item, the discussion of possible vote on Pierce Solar Lease, I want to reiterate that I'm still interested in knowing whether the town is going to retain through any such a lease, the right as the property owner to lease the parcels on which the seller would not be cited. In other words, roach field for, either for keeping roach fields as it is. We've talked about the gravel situation. I understand that's being looked at. But also, if there are other projects that might be in the town's interest to look at that land for, I would hope that the town has retained the right to use that part of the overall parcel for future needs, whether that be other energy projects or cell tower or anything that might be in the town's interest to be able to do. I don't want to see that give that.
Can we have this conversation in about 10 minutes?
If it's going to be open. I'm sorry, sometimes it's open.
Everything's open, and there is an executive session listed, which I am putting on table. There's, it won't be an executive session. So we will get to it in a few minutes, and I would love to.
Thank you. That would be fine. And the same, would the same be the case for this like word setting of goals?
Yes.
That'll be public, open to, thank you.
Yeah, we're all here together tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Just to circle back to Ann Barnes and the scope of work and stuff like that, and the amount of money you have. Justine, if we put together a priority and then do what we do with the SOAR project, and you just have add alternates, you have, you know, you define scope and then add alternates that you think, you know, so if the original bid comes in at 50,000, then you have the next second best thing that you want, or the third best, you know, like just add a change or, or not change orders, but alternates.
Yes.
To the scope of work. And that way we can, you know, pick and choose the alternates to make it possibly work.
Good.
The primary has to be keeping the water from intruding because during the bad weather, which will be coming up, we will have water running in. We need the security of the gutters and downspouts and cementing between the stones and the front.
We need to fill that hole with clay.
Yes.
The clay was removed and then replaced with sand. And the clay holds water away, and the sand just lets it through. So that needs to be fixed. That's another deal. Anything?
Nothing right now.
Anybody else? Okay. Approval of minutes?
I'll move that we approve June, the meeting minutes for June 2, 2025.
I have a couple of comments. If you don't mind if we take it.
One at a time.
One at a time.
Yeah. That's why I'm only doing the one.
I'm going to second it, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay. June 2 meeting, that was regarding joint meeting with the finance, but finance didn't have a forum that night.
Right. Just before the town meeting.
Okay. One of the things at the very end, it said I abstained from the vote, and my vote was actually no. So if you just don't mind correcting it, it's with a motion at the very second to last page, said motion passed, William Tinker abstained. Actually, I've already known, so if it goes to, to the one. Here. Yes.
Okay, I'll change it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll amend my, I'll make the motion to approve it as amended.
Okay, further discussion? Just any, those questions asked in the meeting on revenue and also income for next year, we didn't have it at the time. Do we have a projection of revenue?
For F-126?
Yeah, right here. So it was, you know, I asked the question, figure for total revenue income for next year. Eric Bohein and J.K. Jenklin had a number, but neither Justine or Jen were able to provide a figure at that time. And I was just wondering if that's something we get.
Oh, yeah, we've had, we've had estimates. We had to put it in Gateway and everything. So, yeah, we have it. I can provide it to you as soon as you're in front of me tonight.
But that's it for me as far as, okay?
So motions before us to accept June 2 as amended. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
June 9, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve it as written, June 9.
I'll second it. I've gone through it.
I have read it.
I have, I was, I would request that we table this for corrections because there's a bunch of items in this meeting that should be changed or corrected. And one is the order on this, the discussion of William Tinker's correspondence in response from the planning board. That was item number six. And I ask you, ask the Board that we move that to be held last. Okay, so that's one correction. Like take that whole thing and move it to after. We did the selectmen roundtable, we did all those things. Okay? Okay? You following this? Sure?
Yeah.
Good, I'm writing it down. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If Mr. Tinker wants to send me things that he had issues with, I can go back and review them. It doesn't have to be like, we can, we can bring this up at the next meeting if it's easier for you.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind. That's why I wanted.
Okay.
Okay, so we table, table this.
Table this, yeah.
Good. And I'll email you, Justine? Okay, thank you. Very good.
Now, as for the June 23, I noticed Justine's on the attendees list. I do not believe she was on.
No, he was not there.
As I have.
Okay, so you picked up on that?
Yes. Yes, I did. So that was one of the corrections on that.
I had a couple of corrections.
Okay.
I know that Sandy does a lot of these transcripts, audio, and it's Kier Sarge Solar.
These were provided by Mr. Tinker because.
Okay, well, whoever.
So where is it?
Well, it's in that first, items reviewed about 2/3 of the way down. Kerg Solar LLC needs to be fixed, Kier Sarge.
Okay. That's correct later on.
Also, Karge Solar Lease, again, on the next page. I think I'm right on that.
Yeah, you're correct.
All right, good.
Where is that one?
Right here.
On the items reviewed.
First one is items reviewed, and then the second page is just under the National Grid easement. No, good deal.
It's easy text.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve as amended for June 23, 2025.
I'll second the motion. On favor?
Aye.
August 11.
I will make a motion to approve August 11 meeting minutes.
On the scale.
Right.
So the one thing I wanted was like amended was to hire a mediator. It was to hire an investigator. You understand? At the very last paragraph on the last page.
Good. Well, that's a, rewrite.
Right. It says, motion to hire a mediator on the advice of town council. And William Tinker argued mediator wasn't necessary. And then it said an investigator, not a mediator. And you said, oh, I used a wrong verbiage. So I just like would amend, but hire a investigator.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
She is a mediator who also does investigations.
I understand. To me, the two terms in this situation are interchangeable. So the same person, I do the same work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that being said.
Okay.
We have a motion to accept and seconded.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, discussion impossible vote on vacant town buildings. The Page Building came close to being bought by a group of people, friends of the Page Building, but is on hold right now. The title is not clear. So this goes way back, different opinions from different lawyers. And where it's sitting right now is, I think the Page Group is waiting to speak to the mixtures about clearing the title. So that's where it's hung up.
So nothing will be done with that building this year before the winter?
I hope that they do, but I don't know.
Well, it's kind of getting late in the season.
Yeah. Well, that's the case with that old town hall, same way. Time flies.
We mentioned at the Capitol Planning Committee today, that meeting, is there any, any type of records, like from 2014, when they did the title search and all that back then, with the annual town meeting? We allocated, I think, $4,000 or $5,000 at that time. So for all these three buildings. I don't know if any records are actually done, or, you know what I mean, like title work or, because there was a question that was brought up about the trust with the mixers.
Right.
Like, do they actually have right of first refusal?
Right. And that's what various town council lawyers have disagreed on our own. And then the people that were working for the group, the Page Friends, decided that the title wasn't clear, and they didn't want, that there's a right of first refusal on it. It goes back, we knew completely, we knew it was clear back when we started dealing with this in the teens and just five months ago, three months ago, that, you know, town council said it was okay. It could still be okay, except their lawyer is worried that they'll get stuck. So they're trying other workarounds. But all the stuff that happened here and all the stuff that happened from town council should be archived and available.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a huge folder on this, so you're welcome to come in anytime and look through it, if you have an entire day.
I do. I actually do. It's a great way to, great way to, you know, use it up. You never know.
Well, you said you do some reading, right?
Yeah, I do plenty of reading, so at least this will be focused.
Just let me know, and I'll have it ready.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Is there any way that legally and the Page Building's lawyer and the town's lawyer would be able to make some sort of agreement that said, that gives them, the Page Friends, the right to go in there and commence work on that building prior to the snow flying?
I don't think legally we could do that.
Don't really want to.
And it's the L word, probably.
Well, no, I, it was just, you know, a lot of times if, when you're working on one little section on a deal, you know, the seller allows the buyer to.
To start early.
You know, move in, whatever. Okay? So I didn't know if that was a possibility, that something like that might happen.
I don't think that's possible. I mean, it would be, we'd be exposed too much legally.
Well, the other question, the elephant in the room is, you know, what's going on with Zico's?
With Zico's, we've asked Mark Korzek to negotiate the contract. So that's still, right now, we'll, by next week, we'll know.
Well, why? All right. We're going to use the L word again. What legal right does Mark Korzek have to negotiate a contract with the town? And, and, you know, and I'm not, this is not against Mark or anything like that. I'm just saying.
We've asked, he offered to help. He's good with contracts, he's on the Finance Committee, and we just thought it would be a good idea to let him give it a try.
Well, I mean, if, I'm looking at the other end, okay, that he is not, he's not an employee of the town, okay?
of the town, okay? I mean, he's on various committees, but looking at it as a business person, if I was Zuko's, I could make any deal I want with Mark, but that doesn't mean that I am legally.
And we'll have to sign any deal that comes out of it. So he can't sign anything. All he's doing is talking. And he's skilled at it, so we're kind of using our available resources.
Now, this $15,000 bill that we got, okay? And I brought this up back last year about the contract, about the fact that it's debatable whether or not that contract is even binding upon the town partner.
Which is precisely what we're talking about. I personally think the contract stinks.
Correct.
I can't believe that we got tangled up in it. So now we're going to try to get out of it. So I don't know what we can do here until we know more.
Well, first off, I mean, you know that anything with a penalty clause has to be run by town council. And that was not run by town council.
Actually was.
Well, that was the, when I talked to everybody else, they said that the Select Board had never seen that before it was signed, nor was it run by town council.
I haven't seen it, and it was already in the hands of town council. But that's me personally, I missed a couple meetings, so.
Well, no, I mean, I asked questions, and everybody said no.
Well, I don't know about how that worked, but.
I find it very interesting, I guess is a good word, that town council would have allowed that contract to be signed.
Actually, me too.
Yes, I mean, and if that's the representation we have from town council, maybe we need a good town council.
Thank you for your input. I appreciate it.
But, you know, I'm really concerned about that. Now, that bill, is that just regarding the Page, or is there going to be another one generated on Ruggles Hill or on the Gilbertville School?
I don't know now. I'll know next week.
Mr. Chair?
I'll have a feel for it next week. Right now, I don't know. We're still now negotiating. Yes, ma'am?
That invoice was for the three buildings, because all three buildings were part of the contract, so we will not be getting another one.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
That's one point. It's fair.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, it was Executive Session, no contract was presented, no, the Select Board didn't do a public vote to authorize that contract. So, and if it was done anywhere, please show me.
Well, we'll just have to, let's just wait and see.
Okay. I just want, so everybody knows, that's all, because I said it at the last meeting.
Yep.
That's all. We'll get through it. Anybody else want to?
Well, while we're talking about abandoned buildings, one of the IRPs going on for the Ruggles Hill School, what we're going to.
We were talking about it today. So that'll be in motion too. We have to see if we're clear of the auctioneering company. So again, this is, I think we're close to figuring something out, but I don't know what yet. And I don't think anybody else does.
No.
Well, I mean, you know, you're talking about, you know, the snow's going to fly, and you're worried about the Page Building. You should be more worried about Ruggles Hill, there's a hole in that roof.
I'm worried about all of it. All the roofs need to be fixed.
Well, I'm very worried about the Ruggles Hill, as you know.
That's your baby.
Yes, it is. It's my baby, and it has been for years, so.
Thank you. Anne?
The Ruggles Hill School has had a clause that relates to the mixtures, that it goes back to the mixtures if it isn't used for education. I know that probably in the 2013s or whatever, it was decided that that no longer applies. But now that it's an issue with the Page Building and the mixtures claims, do you also have to look at that before moving ahead?
Absolutely. And we were going over that today at the Capitol Planning. Eric Fleming has a large folder with all that stuff in it, and it's the same kind of thing. No worries, this is all clear, go ahead. And then, for us, at the end, it didn't fly, so. And it might have if the Page Friends had a different lawyer. I don't know. I mean, it's just, but I'm not going to trust, personally, I'm not going to trust any of it.
Thank you. If you can put one comment in my favor, is that our uses for the Ruggles Hill School are educational. So if that is an issue, that isn't an issue.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else on this? Okay. Discussion and possible vote on Kirsarch Solar Lease.
So, I had asked Mr. Chairman to put this on the agenda, hoping I'd have something more to report. The only thing I have to report is that I did get a call from Andrew at Kirsarch, they submitted kind of everything that we asked for to our town council, and we're waiting for our town council. Haven't heard back from him quite yet, so I'm hoping to get it for the next meeting for you guys. So that's where we are now. So I have news, but no news?
Yeah, well, some news.
Yeah.
We, I went out there with Harry, driving around, I went out there with Marty. The issues are, I'm going to encapsulate for you, Mr. Cole. The issues are that it's, one thing, it's the last large piece of ground at the town halls. So we have the playing fields there, and then we have the gravel bank that our highway department uses for sand and gravel. And in there, somewhere between those two, or maybe in the hole, which is my good idea, but whatever, will go this solar array. So the power of the solar field has been upped due to more efficient towns. But the footprint that they're asking for, as far as I can tell, is the same as they asked for.
Yes.
So we, we've been over this. I'd like to see flags. I'd like to see a way to really go there and see on the ground what we're talking. But I think, I think there's enough room to do everything. The point is that the gravel and sand costs the town, would cost the town upwards of $50,000 a year. So that would be kind of off the money that we make from the lease.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
So initially, something that was really important to me and Harry when we were talking about this, was making sure that we get money upfront when the lease is signed, and then a percentage in construction, and then obviously the rest when it's up and running. And that, I can say, was part of the, they were, they did put that in there. So again.
Part of the new contract?
Yes, the lease. Because, you know, to your point about the $50,000, I mean, eventually we'll be getting a lot more than that, like hundreds of thousands of dollars, so. But what was really important to us initially was, okay, will we sign a lease? Well, we should be getting something. Not the whole thing, because it's not up and running, but that was negotiated, and that will be part of it, so.
Thank you. Sure.
So there are moves in many places to elevate the solar cells in such a way that other things can happen underneath them. There's no reason that the cells need to be near the ground. So there are people running cattle, growing crops, doing all kinds of things under the solar cells by just elevating the solar cells. If we have concerns about land use and continued, you know, access, you know, I would say that one of the options is to ask that this be built as a high-level facility rather than, you know, a low-ground facility. I mean, there are literally people running whole farms underneath of solar cells. And so, you know, that might be a consideration to help ease access and continue to use the ground underneath them.
That wouldn't work for the playing fields.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about your, your.
Far end, yeah.
Down the gravel pit side.
Yeah. So then that wouldn't work. How are you going to get an excavator and dig down the solar panels?
The proposal was for it to be on the ground.
Right. And it would be up to the designer of the firm. You know, the problem is, you've got to dig the gravel out. So you need equipment. And you can't have solar, you know what I mean? Because if you obstruct, like the structure, it damages it. That's a problem. It's one thing to run goats and cows underneath eleven grades. They're not going to do much damage. But there aren't any of those there now.
Right. We're concerned with the gravel, as far as if we can negotiate an access to it.
Right.
A right-of-way, per se, and if they move this, the solar array, depending on, you know, the layout and stuff like that.
So Marty says he's as low as he would go, where he has excavated and is now, right now, storing. So I just was thinking, why not bring the whole gravel bank that he's interested in down to that level, and put the solar at that level? And we'd have to store ahead of time, but he'd still have access to a bank that hasn't been excavated. So I don't know, it's kind of a tricky deal. I know, Harry, you've been over this, we were talking years ago about not, what, bees and flowers to support bees, and having fence lines up enough so that animals can go back and forth. So it's been something that's been on our minds, right?
Yeah, those are kind of incidentals to the whole project of those. Most of the solar discussions I've been involved in with different projects, they agree to that readily, to if you want flowers growing under the panels, if you want a six-inch space under the fence for smaller animals, they typically agree to that, and you stipulate that.
Yeah.
I think the important thing here is, because they're getting close to trying to satisfy National Grid, and within a month or two, I think.
Like a week?
A couple weeks. So they're going to invest close to $4 million for the upgrade to the substation in Gary. So they need a lease to do that. Otherwise, they don't have the lease, they're not going to put up the money to do that. So I think what I would advise or suggest to the town is not really to get down into small items, let this project go. We know what the footprint is. There's probably a year or two for Marty to excavate and to stockpile. And he already has to use his equipment to mine it anyways and process it. So using the equipment and getting it, getting what he can out of there to stockpile will probably be several years' worth of gravel, rock, et cetera. And again, as I said last time, we talked about this, the soccer fields, under the soccer fields, all gravel, in my estimation. And the town is being nice to have soccer fields there, and it's probably a great program and all that. But there's a whole area there to be mined for sand and gravel that could be for years. And that would, the town would have to determine the value of keeping the soccer fields as to the value of mining the sand and gravel at $50,000 a year, as opposed to putting the soccer fields somewhere else, up in the park in Gilbertville, or next to the elementary school. And I suggested partnering with Eagle Hill, because they have a soccer field. So the money seems to be evident here, to get this solar project done and not nickel and dime it.
Yep.
And have the town make some money now, when the lease is signed, and then a couple years from now, $300,000 a year for 20 or 30 years. And the town owns a whole 48 acres, so who knows down the road what other projects the solar industry might come up with for the rest of that area? Because now the substation will be upgraded.
Right.
So this could be a good revenue source for the town now, and even more in the future.
For 20 years in the future, for 30 years.
So the solar field is one thing, you know, their data centers going in here, there, and everywhere, battery box, I know that's kind of a bad word to everybody, but those things are allowed in state. You can't really prohibit them, and they generate revenue.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. I hear all that said about that, it sounds good to me, but I still don't hear, what is the size of the parcel? If a whole 48 acres is going to be leased to Kirsarch, and what are the rights of the West Sea, who would have the solar project there, in respect to the rest of the land? I hear that we could gravel it if we want, I hear that we could probably do these other projects if the town wants, but I don't know contract law, and I just hope that the lawyers on both sides have worked this out, so that the town retains every right to use that property for the, for the fields that are there now, for gravel, if that should have to happen, for other projects, like I said, from cellular to the battery energy, to expand it solar. I mean, we retain the right for that? Because it's 48-acre parcel that we're talking about leasing, and they're on about half of that, right? So why, why are we leasing to them more than the piece that they need for the project we're talking about? And what do we give up by doing that? That's something I want to.
Mr. Chair?
No?
May I respond?
Sure.
I don't have the actual dimensions in front of me right now, but if you want to come see me Wednesday or Thursday, because I'm at a healthcare meeting tomorrow, I can pull it up for you, and we can talk about it.
In terms of the lease?
The dimensions of the, of what they're actually going to be using, and what we can use for, because we can, we can do whatever we want with the rest of the property, so.
Well, that's, that, I'm not, I'm not convinced that's the case, if we sign a lease on 48 acres for them to do this on the 24. I don't know what, what rights we have and what rights they have to the rest of the land that they have leased, but are not using the current solar.
Will you come by Wednesday or Thursday, and I can pull it up, and we can talk about it?
Mr. Tinker?
Mr. Chair? We're not at a final lease agreement, though. The two lawyers are working out the agreement as we speak.
Yes.
They presented to our town council, and our town council had a bunch of comments, and they're, they're working out. So we don't have a final lease yet. So we don't know the stipulation of what they're actually, what the final deal is. So it's not like we're going to vote on this tomorrow. This contract, this lease agreement, still has to be finalized. The language has to be finalized, just so you know.
It's a good policy in general.
Some details I know, that I can share, just I don't have it in front of me, but to Bill's point, yes, it's still an auctioneering.
Ms. Siren?
Holding a real estate broker for us, I'm sure they don't use any more, but the lease should not be leasing 48 acres, it should be leasing 24 with a right-of-way, or, but the right-of-way should be very narrowly, I mean, it should be specifically designed that this is the only way they can get any amount. And that, and that also should preserve all of the rights, so Marty can go in and get his gravel without, and not be forced to just stockpile it until, you know, and then now we have to rip up a ball field. It should specifically only say, "We're leasing you 24 acres," not 48, okay? Because you say, "We're leasing you 48," they can do whatever they want with it, and, you know. Does the lease have escalator clauses in it, so that every year it goes up? Because you know the cost of energy is going to go up, so therefore we should be making more money every, every year. And where's the power going, what that they're generating?
These are, these are things that are going to be negotiated, like.
What I'm just saying is, we should make notes on, and.
But there's phrases to this. Right now, this is the lease for the equipment. And then there's going to be a pilot down the road for the solar. And in that pilot, there would probably be an escalation clause over the next 20 years, or whatever we've worked out with them.
It would not be in the lease.
It wouldn't be in the lease, it'd be another step. This is step one.
But if you, well, there should be an escalation clause in the lease. If you fire, if you rent somebody a building, and you give them a 10-year lease, it usually says after year three, it goes to this, after year six, it goes to this. So having them have a lease that does not have an escalation clause in it is not right.
We don't have the lease agreement yet, so I just wrote down escalator, and.
But that should be in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harry, did you want to step in again?
Yeah, just a couple things. The estimate of acreage for the footprint for the solar is around 25, 26 acres of the 48, so it's not the whole 48.
Yes.
And I believe there is escalator clauses in the current. And I believe there is escalator clauses in the current proposed lease over time for the pilot.
Okay. Well, having, that was concerning me that we weren't going to give all that land away. And that's why I would like to see it staked out with little flags fluttering just to see what that means on the ground. So.
I wasn't comfortable saying like 26 because I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'm still interested in meeting with you if you want.
Do you have a blueprint?
Yes. Oh, yeah. You do too. Oh, we send it to you.
Oh, we were told that it was going to change. The footprint was going to change. So did it change? Was that the updated blueprint?
We have the same one I have.
I don't think it changed.
It did not change since I started.
Okay. But we'll know when we get the, Mr. Cole, anything more?
No, I'm just, you know, just in, I look forward to see what the lawyers propose.
Just a question. So on these blueprints, is the plan to bring the power out via overhead wires or are they going to bury this? And are we, is that going to be just with an easement or are we actually going to lease them the land that they're going to get the power out through?
Those are good questions.
And it'd be up to them to design how they.
Oh, no, I understand. But this is, these are part of the questions we should be asking.
Well, it, it should be on the blueprint. So I'll look and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is to bring revenue into the town. This is a good thing.
Exactly. Right. This is, this is all, we should always be looking at this with the eye of, of us benefiting. We're not in this for them.
Right. And that's another thing that possibly you can negotiate is, is some of these SRECs or however, to offset like the municipal buildings, electric print or electric footprint.
They have that going now, actually. We have something in place, right? We have, there's solar power that is going on and we get some of the benefit from that, from solar arrays that are already in place here.
Yeah, I think it's down at the end of 32 on the left.
Right. Okay. Electricity that gets generated off site still gets created into this.
To whatever deal, right. But that's a similar thing that could be thrown into this. It's not in.
One last thing about Marty.
Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Either going, is this going to be still generating any solar credits and who gets the solar credits?
I'll let you know.
That's what we're just discussing.
Right. Thank you.
Because that could be an awful lot of money.
That's right. I'm not trusting anything.
Huh?
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and vote on unemployment invoice.
So this came up at the last meeting. The town has been taking the burden of this invoice. That was for this wastewater treatment plant employee. So my request is that we take this out of the sewer enterprise account and the sewer superintendent is aware of this.
And this is what we tabled last time?
Yes.
I do have a question on this. Reviewing the sewer, during the budget this year, we, we took $10,000 from that fund to offset like the administrative funds and the town hall costs.
Yep.
So would this be deducted from that?
No. That money, that was a trial. It's actually probably much more than that. But that is to cover, for example, Sandy, who does all the, all the sewer billing. That is the treasurer who does, again, all the, everything that she does for the sewer. That's to offset town hall employees because they don't have an administrative assistant. They don't have a clerk.
No, I understand.
So the town hall pick up a lot of responsibility. That was a conservative number. Next year and the year after, we're going to take a look and see if, how accurate that number, that number is. If we need to increase it, we need to decrease it. But obviously the sewer superintendent will be a part of that conversation as well.
Okay. So where does this money come from?
Right now?
No, I mean, if we're going to go to the enterprise fund and tag them for the unemployment for their worker, we just do that?
Yes.
How much are we talking?
$15,760. Actually, $21,305.61.
I'll make a motion to approve the unemployment invoice for $21,305.61 to come out of the sewer enterprise account.
I'll second.
Want a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One quick question, Mr. Chair. You mentioned like that $10,000, the administration end on the, the town hall. Are we tracking those numbers and stuff?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Are you going to share that information with the board?
Yep. When we get time to the budget, that was my plan because it's only like a couple of months into the year. So it's not very long. We've only billed once.
Do we have a progress, like, like a percentage? Like they've used X amount of hours or anything like that? Do we have any idea?
If you'd like.
I'm just curious. I'm just asking.
I'd have to take a look at it, but it is being tracked, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Because again, we've only had one billing cycle. So it's not a full anything at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on select board goal setting. This was designed to be a freewheeling discussion.
I thought it was going to be a working meeting.
A working meeting. Well, it's aimed at meeting. But yes, a working meeting. So we're having a working meeting in the middle of our, I thought this was a working meeting already, but yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you want to put this at the end of the meeting rather than in the middle of the meeting so that we can have our freewheeling discussion after the select board roundtable?
Sure. Then the next thing to do would be the town administrator report?
Um, thank you. Assisted the recycling center on an issue with a contractor for the compactor that wasn't working correctly. We've had some interested parties in some of these vacant town buildings. So the highway superintendent and myself, and I know you and the highway superintendent also, Mr. Chairman, have also heard people, potential people entering the vacant properties. Met with Verizon on the service issues. Had a call with CMRPC on ongoing projects. I attended a Zoom meeting for the memorial park planning project with CMRPC and Mr. Fleming. Met with the chair of the finance committee today. We meet monthly now. Held our biweekly financial manager planning Zoom meetings, working with the treasurer collector and Sarah Hunter on cleaning up the financial errors from the past, which has been a lot of time. So that's where a bulk of my time has actually been spent. Met with the highway superintendent, highway clerk, CMRPC on the complete streets project, connecting some of the sidewalks from North Road to the Common and also down Lower Road and some other places, but those are some of the top two priorities. We are advertising for a wastewater treatment plant operator, a highway equipment operator, a per diem library assistant and a van driver. I completed performance evaluation reviews with department heads. I attended a meeting at the request of the library board of trustees. I participated in the Ware Civic and Business Association's annual axe throwing with the treasurer collector. We did not do as well as last year. We didn't even place. I think Ryan was the secret weapon last year. Participated in a meeting for the Massachusetts Municipal Association Policy Committee on Personnel and Labor Relations at my monthly Ware radio interview. I met with the new Berry town administrator on some ongoing issues with EMS and the council on aging. Tended a Zoom meeting today for the Quinnen watershed legislation. There's someone I want to recognize. And normally at a select board meeting, I recognize an employee or an elected official. But today I want to recognize Catherine Landine for putting together Chief Landine's penning ceremony last Sunday. She did all the programs. She got the cake. She did the balloon. She organized the whole thing. And I know she's not an employee, but I think she deserves to be recognized for all the work that she did with very little help. So an important date is we're putting together a public forum for the memorial park study project and it's going to be October 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM in this room. So there'll be more information on that coming. One of the things that I have, again, I'm going to be doing this monthly because as I go through all the monthly reports for the budget, again, the only one that really sticks out for me right now would be the legal budget. It's not quite as high as July, but it's still astronomical. So we just need to, we need to really look at that. And unfortunately, a third of it is, is from, you know, various complaints that we've had from one individual in town. So I just think it's important to keep an eye on it. There's not really much we can do if, if certain things arise, but it's going to be a budget that I'm very concerned we're going to overspend. And that's, on that good news, that's all I have.
And you essentially hired the accountant?
He has the offer letter. He is reviewing it and he will get back to me with a signature if he, if everything's all set. But he has it as of 10 minutes ago. I haven't heard back from him yet, but he just got it this afternoon.
Good. Uh huh. That's great. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So now.
We'll go to the roundtable, correct?
Do the roundtable. I would, well, I was going to speak about Mark Korzak and my, my lads and Becky and Bill taking care of the four bay. That's, that used what powered the mill. It would have been full of water. It was just at the dam. So it's hard to picture, but it would have been full of water and everything upstream would have been in the lake, the pond, whatever. So it was pretty, pretty neat and I had a chance to look at a lot of good storm work. And, and I would like to say that Sharon Hardiger, who runs MART, has done a great service as far as I'm concerned. I, I know a woman who has a serious case of cancer and needed lots of radiation and she couldn't get to Pittsburgh every day of the week. And MART took her. So that's what it's for. So I gotta say Sharon Hardiger is doing great. So this matters.
I'd like to say that Sharon also does a role as a like social worker. We don't have that position here in town and she feels a lot of stuff that a social worker would help with.
Yeah. In case of emergency, there's a special population where.
Yep.
There are people who are at risk normally and who are they? Because you can't really, without violating HIPAA laws.
Yes.
Keep a list. But she is essentially the council on aging active out on the road. So she's precious. Yep. All right. Well, that's it for me for the roundtable.
Do you have anything, Bill?
No.
Pretty good. Yeah. Other than mentioning that we had a really good retirement party for Chief Ayah.
Yeah, that was really nice.
It was really nice. Really well done.
And Justine put together a nice platform and everyone gave a speech.
I just did the wording. Sandy's the one that picked it out.
It was very nice. And he will be missed.
He will be.
He's a great chief. He'll be around. I know.
Cry in front of.
Hardwick was very fortunate to have him.
He seemed like a hard time too.
Yes, he did.
All right. So now we go on to discussion on select board goal setting. Which were, which were ideas?
Right. Well, I figured you'd bring some ideas, yeah.
Leave, put the reins in your hands.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
Well, I, getting back to what we, what I'd like to see start happening is us doing some planning. Now, I, I spent many years on the planning board, but there are businesses down here in Gilbertville that could use a little more help on street parking, that sort of thing. And we should be promoting development of some of these, not necessarily town-owned abandoned properties, but there are other properties down here. And I think this, this whole downtown Gilbertville could be made into a destination. Not a huge destination, but get people coming down here and it could improve things in the town. It could improve the tax base by improving some of these buildings. I mean, we already have Rose 32. We have Lost Town Brewery, breweries. We have Hardwick Crossing. We have the dance studio down the road here. And that's a good start, but it needs to continue. And we need to encourage and make things better for these businesses, planning out ahead of time.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I know I'm not on the select board, but can I, just to his point, I have a comment?
Sure.
So in the town that my boyfriend is on the select board in, they have a community development committee and they actually go out and like invite these businesses in to their meeting and like, what do we, what do you need from us to be more business friendly? Or they solicit like, hey, we have this abandoned, you know, drive-in, you know, they literally called Market Basket. Like they try to like, I don't know how far they're going to get with that, but yeah, they have a, a committee that just kind of goes around and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that's what we're talking.
Yeah. You know, and like I said, having very little on street parking down here kind of hampers the businesses. There are people, for instance, they go into, go to Rose 32. They're not going to park all the way up here at the municipal building. They're just going to go on. And that, that is something we should be looking at is trying to encourage and get these businesses some help that are already here. And like I said, we're, we have a good start here.
Well, that's the second time that you've been talking that I thought about the Polish Hall.
Yeah. That's still vacant, doesn't it?
Well, it's, it's hard. We couldn't figure out who owned it. We'll have to backtrack. There are a couple of buildings up next across from Regan's Garage.
Yeah. Well, one is slated to be demoed, but.
Yeah. But, you know, we should look at what we can take in tax title. Of course, it costs thousands of dollars to demolish a house.
Right.
And the Polish Hall has been derelict for 10 years. I don't know what it'd be like inside, but, but yeah, to have another place to, I was thinking of Rose 32 because the chief and I were trying to imagine how to make pot parking.
Right.
There isn't.
There isn't. And I remember when they first came in for the special permit.
Right.
And that was an issue.
Yeah.
And apparently still is.
Still is. And they, you know, they, when the parking lots filled up and all the tables are full, nobody could stop and get more stuff. It was like that at the brewery.
Yeah.
We were catching grief from the state for people parking in the street. So, so those things need to be hopefully helped. Right?
I thought I saw a handout here.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes, okay. I think you, you recall when we had a debate on the town hall floor that I said that I had a plan to revitalize all of Gilbertville with getting the cannabis, there's floors on there that they, they have said in the past that they are willing to do something with the town. My proposal was to somehow coerce the Windsor, which is for sale and the, and the, what used to be the pharmacy across the street and, and that's also for sale. Getting those buildings, getting a contractor involved, getting, taking those two buildings, revitalizing the Windsor into a very nice bread and breakfast for the tea room down, or restaurant on the first floor, taking that pharmacy back and putting it into a tea room with the, with the, you know, bringing back the ice cream parlor. I, I know Susan very well and Susan says she'll give up her building if you give her another one. So take that whole thing down, put up nice little shops, parking in the back. You've got some apartments above. You've now revitalized that entire corner of Gilbertville. And you've got people coming in. You've got the rail trail coming in. And you can, you can get it so that it snowballs over and you get this, this school, which I had contracted three years ago, willing to take that school, build an L on to. willing to take that school, build an L on to it and turn it into senior housing just like we have on Church Street. Um, I mean, all of those projects, something that large, you could go into the USDA and, you know, even the money's tight and whatever. Revitalizing a small town like that, you could get HGTV. You could get Chip and Joanne Gaines. All of these people would just love to come in and do something like that. I mean, there'd be TV film crews that would be following this thing.
And they'd be eating at the Whistle Stop.
And they'd be eating, they're eating at the Whistle Stop plus the new restaurant at the, at the Windsor. We could have another restaurant underneath, you know, in the senior housing so that the seniors can just come down and they could eat in the restaurant that's in the Gilbertville School. I mean, there's, it can be done. It just needs somebody with vision who's willing to pick up the phone and annoy somebody. Okay? Cause that's what it really comes down to is, is lots of phone calls.
You know, people used to take the train out to the Windsor for the poker.
Yeah. You know, and, but, you know, Whistle Stop is saying they wanna do the rail trails. Well, you know, uh, you know, they wanna do dinners in there and whatever. I mean, it's very easy to take that whole thing and move it all the way down to here. Uh, we build our new little L on on the back. And this town, this town doesn't have to start worrying about money.
Good.
You know, if we do something like that. And the incentive to somebody to do something like that is we don't have any taxes coming in from it right now, so we give them five years of free taxes. After that, it, you know, we, we still are gonna get money in revenue from permits. We're gonna get it from sales tax. We're gonna get it from people coming in and using everything. You know, you give up some real estate tax for a few years and now you've got all of these projects happening. And this town stays exactly the way it is because you put in, you put in ice cream parlors. You're putting, you, you suggested a bicycle repair shop, okay?
Yeah, the rail trail.
Yeah, the rail trail, you know, a couple of little gift shops selling, you know, we love Hardwick, chachus, you know? These people will buy it, people will come and we can be a little hub. Uh, we can have, you know, milk from one of the dairies and cheese from one of the dairies. And, you know, all the people who live here in town who produce things, they can be sold in a little community store. You know, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a pie in the sky idea.
The thing is, how do you start? Where do you start?
You need somebody who can, who's other people.
It, you, exactly. You need to have, you know, you, you need to have three or four people. I'll do it, you, will you do it with me?
I'm volunteering.
Will you do it with me?
Maybe.
Okay. You know, but a couple of people should just go in there. But we've got, we've gotta have the town on board to sit there and say, yeah, we're willing to, if we can get these buildings, we're willing to give you free taxes, but this is what you have to do.
Right, okay. Mr. Cole?
Thank you. Um, I would agree first with what Jeff said about it would be helpful to have some sort of a planning department or planner. Planning board is occupied a lot with permits and so forth, which you all know, all know. And, um, and working on some bylaws, which believe help the town with its planning, both to encourage some kinds of development, but preserve the character. In respect, though, to, to staff and who does this kind of work, um, we, it's pretty clear that the towns that do the best with this, both in having money to spend in this direction, but also to accomplish things, are ones that have a town planner or have an economic development office or have a community planning director. All positions that are funded by the town. I mean, there's, there's no way around that. And as we always come back to, well, we don't have the money to do this and that. I would just say that it's very clear that all those positions I mentioned, as well as grant writers, are all things that pay for themselves in terms of creating and reaching some of the goals we're talking about here and have been for years. Uh, but it takes, it takes money, so.
Yes.
You know, different volunteers in different positions just doesn't get it done reliably. That, that was one point. I wanted to mention, too, more specifically, two, two things that I, well, several that I think are important. One, we have, um, uh, the town will have the option to add some, uh, local option taxes. And I think that we wanna probably have a group figuring out what to do and how to, how to create and enforce things if we want them. Those would include like the meals tax we already have, which may be allowable to be larger if the governor's bill passes later. But we don't have an occupancy tax, so that our, um, any hotel or motel or any short-term rentals, including any E and Bs, which we don't have many of now, but we might have considerably more down the road um, with the ADUs that, that have to be allowed now, that make a good idea. We don't have any occupancy tax set up and that can be significant. Um, there are, there are various ways for the town to make money on some of those things that I think we need to look at comprehensively with, with the development of the kind that would create them. Again, meals, restaurants, occupancy of various sorts. We, there's nothing in place now and we don't even know if they're getting enforced properly, which, which it's, it's hard to find out, but it doesn't look like they are in every case. Um, I wanna mention, too, that, you know, as the town is seeking all sorts of different parcels for different reasons, you know, where do we put a police station, where do we do this and that? Um, I, I would suggest that we consider, and I know I mentioned this today, capital planning, but the town, I think, would do well to work toward having an inventory of those properties which may become eligible for the town to exercise a right of first refusal. That is, buying a property for its fair value or its agreed-upon value if a sale is struck between a seller who's on any of the chapter programs now and wants to make a change of use or sell the property. So in those cases, the town has to act rather quickly to, to do something like that. But it, it's not hard to imagine a lot of cases where that would present a great opportunity for the, for the town to use a parcel. Um, and, um, you know, whether it be for whatever, any of these solar projects or a public safety complex at the police station or cell phone tower where we would make the, the income ourselves, any of those things. But we don't have an inventory like that. And when these things come up, as they do anytime a farmer takes something out of chapter, you end up looking at the town saying, oh, well, what are we gonna do? Well, we're not gonna put together a plan and the money and act on this within the next hundred and twenty days, so it goes by. And, you know, that, that kind of inventory, that, having that on our radar, I think would make a lot of sense in general. And it's not like grabbing their land, it's like knowing, even telling them ahead of time. If you wanna sell, talk to us because, you know, this, this could fit in our plan. So those are, those are a couple of things that I, I wanted to mention.
Thank you, thank you.
And that is sixty-one A, you know, on the plans. They're supposed to come to the town and give first refusal. I know we're not in a situation to say, yeah, we'd like to acquire it, but if we plan, and there's certain areas that we do potentially wanna acquire through planning and looking at the areas and the key areas are.
Plan ahead.
Plan ahead, yeah.
Yeah, and have, we'd need to, it kicks in when there's a purchase and sale agreement. And then that amount is really what you're talking. So having a, we'd have to have a stash of money, but.
Or financing available.
Yeah, and we could, you know, prioritize different properties. We wouldn't have to worry about all of them. But we can find out how to do, who's on and who isn't.
If I may, um, just mention the dreaded three letters CPA. Um, I, I think that, um, we're reaching a point where the town has a lot of development going on. Um, there are new houses being built all over the place. And we're talking about questions about having a cache of money to do things that are important for the town, uh, that we might want to spend money on. And, um, I can tell you that just where I moved from in Newton, the CPA actually allowed the city of Newton to buy the last remaining open farm in Newton when they created the, the Newton public. They, they, they bought the farm, it is now a CSA, the town, the city runs it as a farm. But the fact that there are many projects that could be funded by that sort of a tax. I know it's not popular, but you have to raise money somehow and it's not, it's not a tax on everyone, it's a tax when you sell real estate, right? So I put that out there. I would also say that, um, we really need, from an infrastructure point of view, we, I would ask that, that the select board consider pressuring Comcast for better internet service. And, um, and looking to the, um, the wireless companies. They're going to want to come in and put a big tower up in the middle of the field, which is a sub, sore subject to some people. Um, and I'm not gonna say yea or nay on that. I'm just gonna say that that is an unpopular opinion. But they solve their Wi-Fi coverage problem in other creative ways with micro cells distributed around, around the, the town. And I think that, that it's, while it's quaint and it's, and it's cute to say, well, we have no Wi-Fi, uh, we have no cell service in, in, in Hardwick Center. It's also, I don't think something that's gonna play well if, if we try to develop this town as a tourist destination or anything like that, where people can't pick up their cellphone and have a cell signal. And from a point of view of having someone that wants to live here and pay their taxes and maybe have a business, the fact that our, our cable internet sucks, um, is not good. And I, you know, and I was very shocked when I moved here and found that Comcast is not providing free internet access in Town House and, and in the Historical Society.
Or this building.
Or, well, okay, so why aren't they? Every other town I ever talked to, they are.
They had contracts.
Uh, right, but, but I'm just saying that this is something that if you're looking to the future to make Hardwick an attractive place to run a business and, and live in.
Right.
Um, it's hard when you have poor infrastructure. And, and, you know, that's a critical thing. So I would put those two things. And I would also love to have, we've cut the trees down behind the building because they were gonna fall down and crush the building, I guess, according to the insurance company. It would be nice if there was a, a vision about what we wanted to do with that land and the land in front of that, of this building. Cause I have to say that driving through town and seeing a decaying stair, stairway with a piece of wood across it doesn't promote the town as a forward-thinking, well-maintained place.
You don't think that's beautiful?
It's lovely. So I just, you know, when we're talking about having a vision, it would be nice to have a vision that is both visual and practical. And how do we make the town look nice? The, the rail trail, the overlooked, all that junk. Make it look nice. Buildings make it look nice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'd like to, oh, would you like to speak now?
Yes, please.
I was gonna speak, no.
Well, why are you?
There is a vision that I was led to and it was shown to me by somebody I know that moves a lot of earth around. It was his career. He built Saint Vincent's Hospital up to the ground level, which is incredible when you think about it. Anyway, he took me over there and we looked at the bank in the back. And, uh, he said that all the soil that came out of the foundation here and at the church was spread on that hillside. And if you look at it, you can see where the original bank came down. And then there's this bulge that runs all the way across. And he said that's where they took the material and put it. So he said, why don't we take that material and put it out front and lift this parking lot?
And level it.
And level it. And put up a stone, well, he suggested engineered block uh, because you get all the engineering taken care of when you buy that material. So you don't have to go to a structural engineer and do that. And disappear the steps, fill that in and have, and have a flat, well, a draining, but a flat parking lot out front. And even have maybe access to that side hill. But the material's there. It looks, like I said earlier, it looks like my belly over the belt. You wanna look at that and it's up there. So that's a vision that Paul Benoit has and he knows what he's talking about. So it's a little radical, um, but there's a vision.
And there's a, a thing that a grant writer could be going out and looking for support to do.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Jeff, and we own that, that whole hillside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the way up to the road.
It's another piece of land.
Yeah, and Paul says you put, you put the extension up there, too.
Yeah, yeah, he has a plan to, uh, change this building a little bit around, which needs to happen anyway. If we're gonna save the building, we have to dry out the cellar because the drains down there haven't been taken care of in a hundred years. So that needs work and some of these things could all be done together.
You take the dirt down, this, this base, this building, the basement's gonna dry.
Well, it could be, yeah.
It'll help it.
Could have blocked it. Mr. Cole?
Thank you. Um, what Neil said makes me think of, uh, one thing to, to report, sort of, which is that the CPA you mentioned, that, that's the Community Preservation Act. And, you know, not accounted, it's a Community Preservation Act. We almost passed it, as you would remember.
Two votes.
Yeah, years ago, and half the crowd walked out at the wrong time. This came up and narrowly failed and, but it's not a tax on transactions. It's a, it's a surtax on your property tax. And that's set by the town, if they adopt it, um, as being from one to three percent of your tax, of your property tax. So that means more taxes for everybody, except it doesn't apply to the first hundred thousand dollars of property value that would be taxed. And there may be other exemptions for, for, uh, lower income and such. But the town, if the town chooses to do, if the town chooses to do that, that pool of money is segregated, set aside and then matched to a varying degree, which used to be really good, a hundred percent. Now it's been a lot less from the state, but still it's something. And that pool, plus the match, ends up being allocated according to some required percentages. It's like housing, open space and several things. Um, and, and the bulk of it more discretionary. And those, those expenditures decided by a committee of townspeople representing those different needs. I think it's a great idea and it's helped a bunch of towns. Um, it's just a little more taxes, which is why, um, you know, why sometimes it's hard to, hard to pass.
But we came so close, we could drag it.
Yes, I know, that's so true. And if, if I may, in a general way, please just say that it's, it's interesting to hear people talking about, let's set some goals, talk about where the town wants to be down the road. Well, um, I would remind us all that we have, since two thousand twenty-three, a new committee, the Master Plan Steering Committee, that was established exactly to bring these things into focus, gather the townspeople's opinions and ideas about all sorts of things. Um, in two thousand twenty-three, we started that. It's an eleven-member committee. We had some defections from, for health and some for maternity. We got a couple of new people, but we still could use more help on that. But in the meantime, using no town money, but only money from, uh, I think it's the Community One Stop, working with Central Mass, we've been creating, month after month, the, the content of the chapters that include many of the things we're talking about. So there's transportation, there's housing and land use. You know, there's infrastructure, there's town assets. All of these different things we're looking at and seeking input. We've got a lot of input. We have over three hundred survey results. Most of you in here have probably done that. We had a successful workshop, we had a lot more opinions. We're pulling this thing together and it will, it will come back. We're pulling this thing together, and it will, it will come back to the town for consideration and fine tuning and hopeful adoption, and then maybe be implemented. This was last done in two thousand, and you were on, you were a chair of that, Eric.
Well, that was the first, the first one.
The first, and then a two thousand ten attempt to rewrite it that didn't didn't get finished. But but here we are now trying to do this, and it is exactly what we're saying we want to accomplish here. So I would suggest everybody use that as a resource and a channel for for a lot of these ideas. And I would suggest it all boards, when they're looking at decisions they're making, they make reference to the current or future master plan and and the intentions of the people, you know, for for what's to be, what's to be done. So that's where we are on that, and any any help would be welcome. Only other thing about that, the front of this building, one of the first things we did in two thousand twenty three was decide that we wanted to fix that out there. And the committee lined up volunteer effort, materials, and we're going to fix that out front. And then we were told, no, it's not your job, you know, don't bother. So we didn't. But I mean, there's, there's things like that that can be done and, you know, need to be done. And, you know, sometimes get them done maybe a little, a little differently than.
And I was offered four thousand dollars to fix the stairs, I mean, to make them go away. And I know how to do it. I didn't have a crew, and I can't charge for the work. But I could boss the work, and we could tear that stuff out and put in a little wall.
Maybe we have to do it after dark, the way it looks, but it's got to get done, you know?
Do it little by little. You know, just a small improvement can make a big difference.
That's right. It is an eyesore.
I had a couple of things, based on what I've been hearing today from between this and capital planning. It sounds like one goal could be an asset inventory. And what we are working on in the treasurer's office, because we had some misleading information, is in the pleasure every year, we have a little over six thousand for tax taking. Well, in the past few years, what's been done with these properties is the debt has just been sold to Talid, which is the collection agency. And that's all well and good, but you don't make any money that way. So getting back to actually doing, sore subject, but in the past, Zigos was actually the company, ten years ago, that was doing the town auctions and stuff for for these properties. But I think getting an accurate list of, okay, what houses and properties are actually in foreclosure, what is in tax taking, where things are. And the Polish is a big one, because right now we need to go back several years and look at old conversations between old attorneys about where where that actually stands. Because I don't even know, I can't even tell you if we own it, because I don't think we do.
No, I don't think we do. I think the person who owns it has been dead for about twelve years.
I can answer a little bit about Kozlowski. This was owned by a group of people.
I know.
Okay?
Yeah.
And they're all dead, all right?
Right, that's what it is.
And and their kids are all dead, too, because my cousin was one of the last people, okay?
We need to look into that again, too.
As far as I know, with my my real estate background, is that the town has to go in and formally take it.
Right.
All right? And that's, that's what they, that's, and that's something, actually, that Jess was working on five years ago.
And we would need to then do something with it.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it's it's weed grown and the, I noticed today the pavilion needs a roof, so.
The town can use a pavilion.
The town could use the pavilion.
The other thing I I heard, and I actually, you know, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact words that you used, but you talked about like a, the utilities in town. Or did you?
Infrastructure.
The infrastructure. I think that would be a good long range plan also for the board. Those are just my suggestions, between an asset inventory of absolutely everything, leading up our list of actually everything. And infrastructure. I think that's, those are some great long range plans. That's just my advice.
Yeah, like we talked about earlier, the sewer infrastructure.
Yeah.
Getting it all messed out and.
Yeah.
Looked at it, stuff like that. If there's anything, any future grants that we could apply for that either need repair or or fix some of the sewer piping.
Yep.
Or extend it in certain areas. And they were doing the town's needs.
Smoke tests. Some engineers came in and put smoke candles in the manhole covers, and you could see coming out of the state pipes and houses the people who had illegally hooked into their, into the storm drainage system. Because you could see the smoke coming out of the line.
One of the things we talked about before, the annual town meeting before this, was the additional taxes on, or passing a bylaw for camping, glamping, everything of the short term rentals.
Is that the occupancy?
Yeah. And we can, I know this state will get like six and a half, we can whack it, excuse me.
Mr. Schmidt, did you have something before us? Peter, did you want to say something?
Oh, I, I'm here on the listening tour. And thank you for all talking.
Have a good night. Are you going to make a motion to adjourn?
No, I have a couple of things I want to bring up. Well, because Neil brought it up first, that when we're talking about cell phones, they they have, they have the infrastructure now that we can put them up in in the towers of all of the churches. And then, you know, they're, they're extended.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're extenders. And I mean, we don't, we don't have to put up the giant, you know, tower that they fake, making it look like a tree, okay? And where the CPA, CPA is concerned, the issue is is that we have, the taxes in this town have gone up quite a bit in the last few years, okay? We've got a sewer, the sewer project and whatever. If there was a way, such as Eagle Hill starting to finally pay some money, if people could see that, okay, Eagle Hill's starting to pay some money. We got some money coming in from this whole thing. Okay, your taxes are now not going to be seventeen dollars per thousand. They're not going to be fifteen dollars per thousand. Now, if you add that one percent, people are not going to freak out. People are going to look at it, but, you know, I know, I can't take another one percent because, you know, our taxes have more than tripled in the less than twenty years that we've owned our property. And that's, you know, as a senior citizen on limited income, you know, it's getting to the point, we can't do that. I already talked about the Kozlowski, but one thing that this town is not using and is all of the expertise in the senior work off program or the potential expertise in the senior work off program, which has been basically kicked us to the curb lately. And there's a lot of people in this town with a lot of experience that are not being utilized, and that's town politics, and that's got to stop.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we should continue this discussion for a later date. There's a lot of things we could be talking about. We could go on here for like hours.
Well, I've got about six ideas written down that I didn't have before.
Right. I think this is progress.
One of the areas, like the common, when we know the how to repair, we're doing Wi Fi extenders to cover all of that. So your cellphone will work.
So downtown, they have, all of five G is on the telephone poles. There's no towers. They're literally on the light poles.
That's in the city.
Right.
And stuff like that. And they also have fiber in the street.
Right.
But.
But we we could have something, yes.
Right.
I I actually, it just, I actually spoke to Verizon. I had a friend at Verizon, and I said, what can we do about Hardwick Common? The town commons, there's no five G up there. What could we do? And he said, oh, we we could probably get an a repeater up there.
Three towers.
They literally, they literally came up and did a survey just to drive through. And his comment to me was, I can't repeat what I don't have. There's no signal up there for us to, we would have to bring, they have to bring it up. So this is something we have to talk with them, the companies, about. There's, there's not enough signal there to repeat.
I mean, it's a question, we possibly ask Bill Hill and see if they have internet that goes up to their school. I'm sure they have someplace.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, no, there's.
There's something that we can work out or.
Currently, right now, we do have.
Extend it down to the common or tap into that.
We have limited Wi Fi in Townhouse. The Historical Society can do it. They use it on the common for the, for the farmer's market, which is provided through the library. And so that is there now. We have a microwave link from Townhouse to the library. But it's not fantastic, and I'd much rather have a actual real internet drop at Townhouse, so.
Can you look into that and get us something to read? A picture or something, an idea?
Sure.
I know you had something, you had a way to boost during the fair.
So we have, so just, I don't want to take up all your time, but currently I have a microwave link from the lib, because there is no internet at Townhouse. There's a a microwave link from the library that they're donating bandwidth over to an antenna that's on the Townhouse tower. You haven't noticed it, it's a little white square on the side of the building, that goes down to a router that is providing Wi Fi in the building and the environments. And then there is a repeater on the outside of the page building right now that's amplifying that signal and putting Wi Fi down that corner of the, of the thing.
Why don't you put one on the church next to you?
We can talk.
Bill, did you have something?
Only to add to that, I think that we, the town does need, clearly, to talk about wireless, the internet and and the cell, both of them. I remember this has been done many times in the past and burned some different people out. I mean, but they, you know, there was a cable committee, and and we end up with a contract that doesn't allow certain places to be covered, or perhaps the town buildings should be covered. I don't know when that's up again, but we we should perhaps be looking at that and ready to talk about the town's needs in perspective.
Comcast contract.
Both kinds of services and 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 see where where we go with that, you know? And I'll say one more thing, as I hear talk about cell towers, there's no applications in the planning board now, but we certainly expect some. And when, when a town decides what, whether that makes sense or not, one of the things that it that needs to be considered is, what are the alternatives for that account? It might include where else in town could a tower be, rather than where it's proposed. But it also includes all these other things, like a more local network, you know, an underground system, you know, a different carrier. I mean, all of this is up for consideration as, where the proposal is in front of you for for a wireless tower, for example, or for a cell contract, an internet contract for the town. I hope our committee comes to life and maybe can look at some of this. Thanks for volunteering, no.
What day, what day of the week?
Give her time.
So on the advice of my colleague, I think I'd like to seek a, I'd like to thank you here. We're going to continue this. We've got notes, we'll go look at stuff. I was thinking I'm going to go to try and talk to the people at the Greenery, see what their plan is. I don't even know if they're going to be growing pot. Have to find out.
Yeah, we don't know what's happening with that. That's a big disappointment, actually.
Well, it's beautifully restored building.
Yeah, but a lot of money. Not much, not much happening.
Oh, the mill, yeah.
But I'd seek a motion to adjourn, if that's all right.
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank.
Thank you.
So, so what we had, so what happened was, there was, this is an area to go have Wi Fi for the fair.